Clay Township Board of Trustees meeting. Please stand for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Boy, have we had some good basketball games or what?
Yes, we have.
And hopefully another good one tonight. So, that's fun. That's been fun. Love March Madness. All right, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Ernie Bryson.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, we have Bill's payable, entertain a motion.
Or I'll make a motion that we support and approve Bill's payable in the amount of eighty-three thousand and four dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll support that.
Okay, I got. Motion and support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, next we have the supervisor's report. And things on the, as far as the water levels are looking optimistically hopeful. I just checked today, we're at five seventy-six point four. And this time last year, we were at five seventy-seven point eight. So, almost a foot and a half difference. So, lower, so that's a good thing. Hopefully we'll have a dry April, May. And we'll, we'll be looking good.
It's getting there, isn't it?
It's getting there. It's, I don't want to jinx it. Um, COVID-19, we are definitely in the uptick. Uh, countywide, we have four thousand five hundred cases in the county. Uh, how many people do we have in the county? About a hundred and sixty thousand? So, you can do the math. I think we're, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand. But we're definitely on the uptick on it. I know the high school and junior high, they're doing, uh, they're, they were on remote. Are they staying on remote?
I think they are.
For, for, for a little while?
Last week, they're supposed to go back Monday.
Okay, because after spring break, they're going back normal. Um, and, uh, the, uh, order allowing us to meet, or any government entity in, in the state of Michigan, to meet remotely or through Zoom, as everyone says, you know, through the internet. Uh, that expired at the end of the month. And then for a while, it was, well, you, you have to meet in person, but you can't have more than twenty-five people. And Friday, that was actually changed to you can have more than twenty-five people, you've just got to be socially distanced. Um, now, if, if Clay Township would want to declare a COVID emergency, we, we then could, re, uh, meet again remotely or through, uh, through the, um, using Zoom or whatever technology you want to use. So I don't know, you know, if that's something the board would want to consider or not. Uh, we can, you can shoot me or get ahold of me if, if that's a, a wish. Um, you guys feel pretty safe this way?
I'm fine.
I mean.
I'm fine.
Well, I think we're teetering on a slippery slope.
We are, we are. And, and that's why I said, we, we should have the capability of going backwards if we need to.
When is our, when is our cutoff date before the next meeting? We have to post, was it seventy-two hours or something?
Yeah.
Eighteen.
Eighteen hours?
Right, eighteen hours. You can, you can change it, but we, we have planning commission and, and, you know, ZBA. I got a DDA meeting tomorrow night, but, uh, I just want to let, you know, that, that's, that's how it stands right now.
Ken, if it gets any worse, can we do anything such as other safety precautions with the temperature or?
Yeah, we could, uh, we could have a temperature check, I, I, I assume. Uh, we got our, our smart, our gun.
I checked mine before I came.
Um, but, uh, just want to let the board know that's.
I have one, I can read it from here.
That's the same, yeah. You shoot people.
I do.
Um, been doing a lot of, uh, work on trying to get funding for our sewer interceptor project. Different avenues than typical, let's just raise our rates to pay for it. And, uh, I'm hoping to, to have some, some news on that here in the next, uh, month anyhow. Um, but that's been taking up a lot of time. Uh, request, also requesting a quote to do the engineering on our, uh, water main replacement project along M twenty-nine. Just because there is going to, I hear, you know, bits and pieces about a big infrastructure bill. I don't know if it's two trillion or three trillion coming out of Washington. And to get money for these kind of projects, you have to be shovel-ready. And so I think it would behoove us to get the engineering done and make it shovel-ready. And then we can put it on, on the shelf when it's ready to go.
Well, let's get some contracts out.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, actually. It's, uh, it's hard to get stuff done right now. Everyone's really very busy.
Let me know if you need help.
Okay, well, it's not with help, it's help with other companies, you know, to, to get stuff. Yeah, I'm requesting quotes to do the engineering on our, uh, uh, enough to go out for bids for our Harsons Island Nature Park. Um, we, we have about three or four projects we're waiting on, uh, just numbers and design. Uh, got a couple of things going on. But, you know, a bathroom at Pearl Beach Pier, uh, and some other things.
It's a lot.
We got, you know, we got a lot going on. Um, we should know this week if we call, if we got our DWAM grant for our drinking water asset management grant it stands for. If you remember, I think that, that was like eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant that we applied for. We should know that this week. Uh, I had a wastewater treatment plant meeting. Oh, last week, our new capital expenditure plan for that plant is going to be eighty-seven thousand five hundred with things that we have going on. That's not eighty-two, it's eighty-seven, five hundred. Um, got a lot of things going on with it, but we're, we're agreeing on some language. I always had a problem that it was thirty-five percent clay, thirty-five percent IRA, thirty percent Algenac. And as of late, and it, it is what it is, Algenac's been probably contributing at least half of the, of the flows into the treatment plant because of high water issues and infiltration in their system. And why should we pay for thirty-five percent and them thirty percent if they're using half? So, we're going to be looking at flow rates to determine the percentage of our capital expenditures going forward. Uh, we're putting that together right now, and, uh, so, I mean, I think that's only the fair and right, right thing to do.
Ernie, so the capital expenditures are that, is that just for general maintenance coming out? Or we got any new, um?
Well, there, there's like a fifteen, twenty-year schedule.
Okay.
That we have. And, uh, um, you know, we, we, we even it out as far as, uh, cash flow and what, what's planned. And I can shoot you guys a copy of that.
Please.
If you, if you want. What, what's the big thing coming up in about three years? The chlorifi-
Clarifier?
The clarifiers. Um, that, that's usually a, a big thing. Just like in the water plant, we have the same thing in, in the water plant. Um, the, the, uh, microfilters are the big thing, you know? Uh, they, they last seven, eight years and then boom, you know, you have a, a two million dollar expense. Um, Flamingo Bridge has, has started. Um, the temp bridge is in place and they have a hundred days from when they took it down. Actually, it was April first to, uh, fix it. Um, so, we're, uh, hoping it will be, the, the new bridge will be in service by July fourth. Uh, and then their contract, all the rest of the restoration has to be done by July thirtieth. And I'm sorry, but due to the lack of room for staging cars, they're saying no left turn on Flamingo off from M twenty-nine onto Flamingo. You gotta go down and turn around somewhere. It's kind of like pulling on the ferry. Um, just because there's, there's no room to, uh, stage very many cars. Now, we are look, or I say we, they, the road commission and the engineers are, are, are are going to be adjusting the times. The lights are green pulling on, so there hopefully won't be a long line on, on different times of the day and, and monitoring that, that situation. But, um, the engineers, they couldn't come up with a better solution to, um, for the, you know, it's a temporary traffic problem.
Well, they don't allow no U, any U-turns on that highway anyways, do they?
No.
So, I think we ought to make sure we got signs up because I foresee, uh.
Yeah, there's a bunch of signs up there, so.
As far as no U-turn is concerned.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I think we'll be lenient. But, uh.
Well, we don't have to give them a ticket.
No, that's what I meant.
Well, we don't, but the police probably will.
Yeah, I'm not saying anything.
Anchor Bay Drive is probably the legal option.
Yeah, Anchor Bay Drive or down by the raft.
Well, actually you got to turn around by the raft or go around behind the marsh.
Yep.
I had a conversation with the chief this morning and he said absolutely do not tell anybody to U-turn and do not go down Anchor Bay Drive. It's a private drive. You have to turn around by the raft or go around.
I think people are smart enough to figure it out. I'll just put it that. Uh, phase two, the bike path is, uh, started, you know, the fixing of the big, big potholes, they cut it out and, and replacing. And they're getting ready to do the, um, seal coating. And on our agenda tonight is for the asphalt, so, uh, that's going, going well. And once we get that approved, I'll be submitting the paperwork to get our share of the grant to pay for that, uh, project. Um, getting fi- financing ready for our fire trucks, uh, purchase. You know, we were thinking it was going to be in July and next fiscal year and, and now, okay, we're, we're going to give them in May. So, uh, we got that going and we're looking at closing now on May tenth. And we'll have something for, for our board for consideration at the next meeting. I sent you an email on, on the proposed, um, it's called IPA, can't, something purchase agreement, I can't remember. I, I think a beer, what?
Installment?
Installment purchase agreement, yeah. I hear IPA, I think a beer. I'm sorry, I do. But, uh, so that, that's going good. And, uh, I've been dealing with a lot of blight and building issues and I, I, I have a, um, I want to bring it up to a board for, I think we, we need to get a policy just right now, you know, for enforcement on a, a blight issue. Ultimately, we have to take people to the circuit court, which we've been doing. And we actually filed paperwork in the past two weeks, I think, on three cases. I, you know, I think for any court case, I'd like a policy from the board that say, yeah, yeah, just go ahead and do this. Or, or I don't know if you want every case to come before the board. I think it's too political. We're going to enforce this one, not that one. Or, and I'm thinking more down the future, too. Um, so I, I'd like to, uh, think about it a little bit and, and I'm going to formulate some kind of a policy for us. Because, you know, right now, you know, we get the paperwork, the attorney calls me, I say, yeah, let's, let's do it. And, and, uh, you know, I, I think we need a, a board policy as far as taking people to the circuit court on this. I, I mean, we're, we're getting more and more aggressive, which I think is a good thing. Um, but, but we're.
Do you want to be more standardized?
Yes, right.
With the board?
Right.
So we should review the, uh, blight ordinance soon as possible on that.
What's that?
The blight ordinance.
What about it? Well, this is enforcing it.
Right, well, let's review the blight ordinance and then take it, and then take the policy from there.
Okay.
So that's the procedure we should follow.
Agreed. Do we get a report on what ones are going to court?
Yeah, it's, it's in our, our reports, I think, once.
Yes, it's.
Yeah. But, uh, okay, uh, waiting here on legal as far as our, our short-term rental, uh, ordinance. I haven't heard anything on, on that yet. We've been, we've been busy. The planning commission crafted a medical cannabis zoning ordinance and it's, uh, up at the county for, for their review. And once we, we receive it back, it will go on our agenda for consideration. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention to the board, sorry, it's a long report, but, um, I have a volunteer, or we have a volunteer that wants to put and manage a little pantry, a little food pantry for people. Uh, you know, if they, they need some food or if you want to leave some food off, they can grab it. And, um, she's going to, uh, present at our next board meeting for approval. We're, we're kicking around and, and think about it a little bit, but for a good location. Uh, and we thought we could do it here at the office. We can watch it closer. But you don't want it in too much big of a public place because people are embarrassed. Um, so we're thinking about it in the park, but if you're over here by the playground, you've got the kids and stuff. So we're actually thinking over on the, by, towards Lake Point in the park, but near where the parking lot is, of doing a, a little pantry. And, uh, and she'll be at our next meeting. I've been emailing her back and forth with ideas. And just to let the, um, board know, too, we have a DDA meeting last night and for their consideration is the, uh, Pearl Beach Fishing Pier sign. We all seen the artwork on that, it's pretty spiffy. And then, uh, to do, uh, the engineering for, um, public bathrooms in support of the pier. And, uh, they're also going to be looking at helping out the high school. They're doing a lot of work at the baseball field. And, uh, also installing, installing Wi-Fi in the park next door. So, that'll all be good. Um, we're going to have to, uh, look at and address some of our water ordinance and make some changes to that going forward. Uh, what else? Attended a HEITA meeting with Maureen this past week. And, um, setting up our, our, the cleanup for, uh, the Clay Township cleanup is going to be June fifth on the mainland. And June fifth and sixth on the island at Brown's Field. And, uh, with a little luck, maybe we're going to do a, a second cleanup weekend in the fall. I'd like to. Uh, St. John's Marsh cleanup is May eighth, starting around eight AM. Over by the, across from the old cheers, uh, where the, um, DNR access is. That's where we all congregate. And I've been doing a lot of work, work with, uh, No Limits Fishing Charter. It's been very pleasant working with these guys. And I wanted to mention to the board, the, um, there was some, uh, damage to electrical on the pier where I think the ice grabbed it with the high water and tore some out. And they, they got electrician to do the wiring for the lift. So I'm going to ask the same electrician to give us a quote to fix our, our part of what was damaged on that, uh, on the pier there. Um, and let's see, that, that. Uh, working, setting up music in the park. We have ten really good concerts on the mainland between Algenac and Clay. And then four good concerts on the island this year, actually. Um, so fourteen concerts in total. And, uh, there's lots of things happening that, you know, we're getting back to normal. I'm hoping it stays that way. Uh, so far, the Pickle Tournament's a go. You know, we had the, the Algenac Rowdy sponsored two, uh, beer and wine tasting and a beer and bourbon tasting events in Algenac. Those are a go. I think it was, uh, or June fifth and August fourteenth on those. The Harsons Island St. Clair Flats, uh, car, antique car show is a go. And that's, uh, July seventeenth. And the antique boat show in, at the Algenac Harbor Club is also a go. That's the last weekend in, uh, June. So lots of good stuff going on. That's all I got. So, thank you.
Any update on the beach property yet?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we got the grant for the main thing. I'm still actually, uh, negotiating for, on the, the half of the county, uh, on the one house. We're waiting on information on, on it. And, uh, in fact, I made a couple of phone calls on that, um, today. And, uh, so yeah, lots of stuff going on. It's all good.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing none. We'll move right along to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a.
No.
Oh, nope, Fire Chief report. Sorry, Chief. You wouldn't have mind.
No. Good evening. Uh, Chief's report for March. Attended two meetings, St. Clair Flats Homeowners Association and the Fire Chiefs Association. General business was discussed, uh, not too much at the chief's meeting. Um, March was a very dry month due to less rain. Uh, a lot of grass fires in north end of the county. We assisted in two, one in IRA and then one at Kimball Township. Uh, we also, uh, implemented our Fire Rescue One Academy. That's a training, uh, portion of LexiPaul. Uh, each week, we will, um, hand out a assignment which will be done by email and they'll have one week to finish their assignment. And then there may be a practical at the end of that, uh, that assignment. We also will, uh, give them a medical, um, assignment, too, which will keep them current with their medical licenses. Um, talked to Ameritech, or not Ameritech, um, Alumitech. And, uh, our airboat is almost done. They're just waiting for the stinger gearbox to come in. So they're looking about the middle of April to the end of April. It should be done, should be complete. Spoke to E-one, uh, and that's on track, so we should, uh, they should be completed by the twenty-sixth of April. Our fire trucks, our new fire trucks will be done. And then we'll get those in May. Fire Boat One, we got that out of storage. Uh, it's sitting at the fire station right now. We plan on putting that in possibly at the end of this week or the beginning of next week. Uh, Fire Boat Two is, we're waiting for some seals for the ducking. Uh, we can use it if we need it in an emergency, but we try not to, we don't want to put that one in yet until we get the seals fixed on it. Um, we did, uh, we're experiencing a, a leak in our roof here at the station.
How was it today?
Uh, we didn't have anything today. Um, but, um, I did notify the supervisor and we do have a contractor, uh, coming in tomorrow to take a look at it. So, that's it.
Hey, hey, Ken, one thing, I, I see we got a lot of people from the island here today. Um, at the Harsons Island St. Clair Flats Association, we, we kind of went over the, um, numbers that were staffed on the island for the past few months. You want to elaborate on that?
Uh, March, we pretty much had the island station manned every day.
Like, not day and night?
Yeah, right. Twenty-four hour shifts. Uh, this month, we're a little bit shy in a couple of days. That's because of people are going on vacations. So, we're looking at maybe one or two days that we might not be staffed. But it'll be kind of like in a low part of the week. Uh, the weekends are staffed.
In February, we were staffed.
Staffed twenty-eight days.
Yeah, hundred percent. So, that's a good thing.
Yep.
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, when we're talking about those assignments, for, are, are those for the cadets when you, when you go fire rescue, the, the academy training?
Well, that, actually that will be for the firefighters.
It is.
Yes, it is.
And that's, that's what I thought you were alluding to. And that's how they keep their EMS certs active?
Their EMS certs. And then the, the state of Michigan is eventually going to have mandatory training, which we do have now, but you're going to have to have like certifications that you're going to have to receive in a three mon, a three-year period to maintain your Fire One, Fire Two. So, we're just ahead of the ballgame.
You're proactive, aren't you?
Yeah.
That's what I thought I figured out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Chief.
Yep.
All right, moving right along to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, check reports. Um, I want to make mention of the township notice of the obligation to cut weeds, um, that are higher than eight inches, beginning May first every year. That's lots with imploded subdivisions, um, unplotted lands with dwellings or occupied buildings, um, for a depth of a hundred and sixty-five feet of the parcel along improved streets. Not, including but not limited to M twenty-nine regardless of whether there is a dwelling or not. Um, and that begins May first. Um, there is a fine for up to five hundred dollars. That will be posted in the voice and outside tomorrow. Um, recognition of the twenty-twenty election cycle was, um, sent to me by Jocelyn Benson. However, I do want to say that that election cycle would not have happened had it not been for our election workers and my deputy clerk, Janet Grogga. So they really need to, um, have the majority of that recognition, not just me. The weight restrictions were lifted on the county roads, wastewater treatment plant, equipment replacement funds increased notice. Resignation of Police Department Jay Bennett, resignation of ZBA alternate Kay Lepowski. And there was a resident communication from Roy Brewer, um, regarding the intersection of Fruit Road and Nook. And I had asked, um, Chief Coach from the Police Department to speak on that and he was unable to attend tonight, but we'll give an update on that next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have support? Okay, we have support. And also on that, I know Chief did talk to that resident, uh, Roy Brewer, hasn't it? Um, quite some time, too. And I, I want to elaborate, that, that will never be, well, I, I, I'm not going to say never. It's not up to the township, but I highly doubt that will ever become a four-way stop. But I did, uh, a request from the, um, County Road Commission, their, uh, engineers, that they make the, the stop signs on the Fruit Road sides more visible. Because I've seen it too, if you're going by, the, the direction, if the sun's coming up or sun's down, it's hard to see. And, uh, if they can make it more visible, maybe put a sign on there, the, uh, opposing traffic does not stop at, at the stop sign. I think that would warrant it, that would be warranted there, too. So I did put that request in. Um, just want to let the board know.
It, it's, it's a reasonable request.
Oh, yeah.
Right? It's safety-driven.
Yep.
And we all have seen issues in that intersection in the past.
Yep.
So, if we can get the train on the tracks and maybe give them a little momentum.
Yep.
Then we can get county to.
So we, uh.
Give us a little better signage.
I, uh, put in that request, so.
Awesome.
All right, anything else on, before I?
Could you tell me about the resignations and any specific situations with those or just moving on? Just moving on.
The ZBA, actually, I'm going to have lunch with, uh, Ken and find out what the issue was. And, and the police officer took a job with, uh, St. Clair County Sheriff Department.
Okay.
So, I, I think this, um, this certificate and achievement by our clerk, Cynthia Valentine, needs a, a little bit more.
Uh, read it?
Yeah, I, I would like to.
You have it?
I do.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you read it?
I do. Okay, you have to forgive my mask. So this is, uh, this is from our Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson. And it's dated, um, November of twenty-twenty. It says, "Dear Cindy, in recognition of your dedication to the citizens of Michigan and the integrity of our democracy, please accept this letter and the enclosed certificate as a modest token of my deep appreciation for everything you have accomplished during this challenging election year. What you achieved was no small undertaking. You implemented a major voter referendum during a global pandemic while facilitating record-breaking voter turnout. You showed once again that election administrations in cities, townships and counties across- You showed once again that election administrations in cities, townships, and counties across Michigan are tireless and highly ethical experts capable of executing safe, secure, and accurate elections no matter the circumstances. Again, I thank you for your service to your community, state, and our collective democracy. You have upheld one of the basic principles that sets our nation apart, the right of every eligible citizen to make their voice heard by casting a private ballot. I hope the upcoming holiday season is joyful and relaxing for you and your loved ones. Sincerely, Jocelyn Benson, the Michigan Secretary of State.
Good job. Yes, she could have put high water in there too.
And that just goes to show you how slow the mail system really is because we just got it last week.
That's funny. Yeah, congratulations for sure.
Thank you. But like I said, really, there needs to be a lot more said about our election workers. We couldn't do it without them and definitely our, our deputy clerk, Janet Gorga, so.
All right, we have motion and support for the consent agenda. Any more discussion?
I have this question here, maybe a clarification on the in-between meetings, check register. On the second one down, Anthony Filiano refund partial in lieu of C8777. Don't. Can you tell me what that's about? That was a discrepancy in the, in lieu of fee that he was charged when the water line. Say it a little louder. It was a discrepancy in the amount that he was charged when the, in lieu of was calculated when they cut the water line.
That's one of the reasons we're going to look at our water ordinance again. It's not equitable. All right, anything else? All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Moving on, unfinished business. We have the, for the bike path, I have two quotes. One from Ash for finishing the asphalt part of the, of the project. Asphalt Unlimited for price $11,275. And then Jolsh paving, that one is at $12,375. We've used both of them very much in the, in the township. And I recommend that we go with Asphalt Unlimited for $11,275. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make that motion that we approve the Asphalt Unlimited Inc. proposal in the amount of $11,275 to pathway pave approximately 650 feet at a nine-foot width. Path, yeah, I'm sorry, that's all we need.
The savings of $1,100.
Yep, support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? I, I, I just want to mention too, you know, we had a, a $45,000 budget for this. And we got a matching grant through the Wilson Foundation. And we are under budget, I don't know where, I think we're at $37,000 and some change. And truthfully, when, when this started and when we saw underwater, had to raise it up and everything. I didn't think we, I, I thought we'd be over $45,000 for the amount of work, so. And, and good thing too, all these contractors are basically local contractors, which is a good thing, so.
Didn't Cordis do their phase one?
Yep, Cordis did phase one. They really saved us. I mean, they, they, they went over and above and beyond. They brought, raised it up over a foot with grindings. I think that was $12,500. And that came out nice. We got the guy doing the whole, the whole putt path, Essing Clay Township as far as, you know, rubber sealing and seal call. I mean, it, it's going to turn, turn out nice, so. I had a lot of people stop me in the grocery store and stuff and said they, they really appreciate. That, that path, huh?
They use it.
That path is well-used, so.
Good price, too.
I just wanted to mention that, so. And I'll turn in all the paperwork for, to get our, our grant refunded, so. That being said, we have motion and support. If there's no more questions or, or discussion, roll call vote.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bori? Yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Sharkey?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Motion passes. Okay, on new business, we have the Fire Department Recognition Chief.
If I could have Sandy Kufel come up.
All right, Sandy Kufel.
Sandy, I'd like to present this plaque to you on the Clay Township Fire Department. I'd like to thank Sandy, trustee Sandy Kufel, for dedication and service to this community for the past four years and leadership, insight, number waiver, support of the Clay Township Fire Department. Consider it honored and worthy of you and of the Clay Township Fire Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think she's been a big part of our community longer than four years.
I still am.
And still are. Yes, you are, yep.
Local entrepreneur.
Unfortunately, that recognition, along with one from the board, was supposed to be done at that November meeting, but we were shut down from COVID. And our, our board didn't hang on to it. We had already previously presented it to Sandy outside of a board meeting because we felt it was getting kind of,
Yeah.
kind of drawn out, but yes, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And all that you are.
Thanks, Sandy.
Yep. Stay up there, Sandy. Next on the agenda is charitable gaming license.
That's Mr. Sadler.
Oh, okay. For the Elginak Football Association.
Passing the buck, there you go.
Basically, they, we have to recognize them as a charitable, charitable.
Organization.
Organization, so they can get licenses and stuff. Am I saying that right?
That is correct. We're looking to reinstitute the Muskrat Scramble in recognition of Chuck Bussettel. So that's what we're looking for at this time.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses for the Elginak Football Association.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, if I could just elaborate a little bit. Chuck Bussettel was a, a great supporter of Elginak athletics in general. He was a great football supporter as well. And the club introduced a Muskrat Scramble golf outing that's taking place May the 15th, 2021, at Oak Ridge Golf Course. So if you're interested, I'm sure you can log on to the, the school's website and get your foursome signed up. It's been a longstanding tradition void of COVID. And really, all the funds go to support not only the football program, but a bunch of athletic departments within the community.
Glad you said something about it. It'd be fun to figure out how, how much in total he's raised since the conception.
There's a lot of zeros behind that number.
There's a lot of zeros, that's for sure, so.
That man gave a lot to the community.
Chuck is very, very much missed, so. All right, that being said, everyone in fair, in favor, we have motion and support, right?
We do.
Motion, everybody in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, next we have an update from the Harson's Island Transportation Authority.
We have meeting dates.
What?
We have meeting dates.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have meeting dates.
I'm going to make a motion to move the meeting dates of Monday, May 17th, and June 21st to the Township Meeting Hall due to the COVID pandemic. Not knowing how things are going to go, I figured it's just easier for planning purposes and notice for everybody. It's a little bit easier and more accommodable here under these circumstances.
Support, okay, motion and support, any discussion? I, I would hope we attempt to do some next, or meetings on the island after July 1, when we do our, our next go-around.
I, I would agree and support that. I think we all enjoy getting to the island several times a year.
Yep, so, and time, this was, this was, we had a 25-person limit too, so. We always go over the island, which is a good thing, so.
Well, I figure after June, you may really give more people time to get vaccinated and it's not such a.
Right.
Scary thing.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Now, next we have update from the Harson's Island Transportation Authority.
Hello, I'm Margie Baldwin. I'm Chair of HIDA, Harson's Island Transportation Authority.
I'm Harold Dane, Vice Chair, Harson's Island Transportation Authority.
Thank you for your time. We just wanted to provide you with an update because we've made some significant progress. You may or may not know that in June of 1997, the Clay Township Board of Trustees created HIDA. And the HIDA Board has worked intermittently off and on, most recently with the collapse of the dock ferry and the concerns for safe and reliable transportation to the island. We've really enacted many things in order to provide the safe and reliable transportation. Just so you know, we did a survey several months ago. And 75% of the people on the island are really dissatisfied with the service provided by the ferry and are looking at the possibility of a bridge. To that end, our committee has been working pretty stringently on some specific things. We have met with the Ambassador Bridge Company. They're very interested in working with us to create a bridge over to the island. The bridge is in the master plan and we're very grateful for that. We've had conversations with St. Clair County Emergency Services. We've been in Lansing, we've met with Senator Dan Lowers, Representative Gary Eisen, who have been very supportive of a bridge. We have a meeting next week with Michigan Department of Transportation. And so we are just working really as much as possible in order to provide this transportation to the island. We have some real concerns about what happens with the medical emergencies. People have to get to work and now the delay sometimes is up to 45 minutes. It has not been reliable. Obviously, you know the issue with ICE. And I think that there was a time and a place for, you know, the charm of a ferry. But now 21st century, this isn't really working very well for the needs to the people of the island. And so that's our concern. We are submitting an official request, just looking for some funding. We're just a group of volunteers. We have just really relied on donations in order to even pay for the mailing and the survey that we did. But we have some significant needs with administrative support needed, mailings, phone, computer, legal advice, accounting services for audit, a grant writer, all of those types of things. So we would love a million dollars, but that might be a little aggressive, so. But we, we. So we're all on the same board here. And then finally, you know, I, I think that it would be important to mention that, Mr. Bryson, I know that with all due respect, I know you are a man of integrity. And I know that this is a significant conflict of interest since your brother runs the ferry and owns it. And so I, I think it would be reasonable to ask that you would recuse yourself from voting and just so that there is no conflict of interest and.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
What are we voting on?
Well, just if anything in the future should come up.
Well, we'd like to get some funding to talk to the attorney. Because we got some questions on House Bill 4807. Because according to Act 196 that I passed you out last time I was here, HIDA doesn't recognize Act 254, which is the Motor Vehicle Carriers Act. We operate on a whole different gamut than they do. It's in section, I think it's 16, yeah, section 16. In exercise of its powers within the boundaries of the public authority, the authority is exempt from the Motor Vehicle Carrier Act 254. And that's what House Bill 4807 was written on and based on. And we think that it doesn't apply to us.
Okay.
And it doesn't apply to the ferry, so.
So does that give you leverage to proceed with your funding?
Oh, that gives us leverage to proceed with, that gives us leverage to proceed with control. The other, the other HIDA board wanted nothing but bridge, bridge, bridge. We want control.
Control of what?
Of everything on District 4.
You want control of the bridge?
Well, we will assume that.
You mean, control of like?
You know, the rates, the rates and everything else that goes with it.
Inspection, that kind of thing?
Inspections, yes. Because that's what HIDA is, wasn't put in there for. Because Artie gave us a nice little thing here, a nice little loss, what do you call it, an attorney? And he said that HIDA actually should have took control back when this was done because it would have, Public Service Commission would have gave Harson's Island Transportation Authority the control of the ferry and its rates. We could have negotiated for them over, you know, over them. So what we need to do is talk to an attorney.
Okay.
So we'd just like a little funding to talk to the attorney.
So what, what, how much are you thinking?
I don't know. $5,000 maybe?
Well, as far as funding, I know, like, there's certain statutes that allow us to, to donate to the Historical Society, the Senior Center, but outside of that, I think we're very limited as to what we can legally give funding from the township for.
Well.
And any of your historical records, I mean, was there anything that the auditors or the lawyer had provided that says that they would be exempt or be allowable to?
Not, not that I, I know of. And I, I did tell them if they, if they have a couple of specific questions, you know, of the attorney, we could probably accommodate them. But I think this is a little bit more, it's, it's up to the board. But like to your point is, you know, the township can, can spend money on specific things that the state statute allows, like we all like Little League. But it's against law for the township to give money to Little League.
It doesn't benefit the whole township.
It doesn't benefit the whole township. I, I, I did send an email to the attorney to see if we, if there's any obligation of, of funding from the township. And they said, no, there, there is no obligation. And she even elaborated that it, it's actually a state entity, not a township entity. It was sponsored by the township, but it's a state entity. And the funding should come from the state. And I know Dan Lowers put in a request for $50,000 for them on the, the next year's budget, a line item. You know, that's got to go through the whole budget process. So I, I'm not sure.
When is that, when does that usually get released? Is it late summer or is it?
Yeah, they, they talk about it late summer. They're on the calendar year, so it'd be January 1.
Yeah, I don't really know.
Or, I'm sorry.
You're right, October 1st. So maybe you'd hear something before then. That'd be a good start for you, Harold.
Yeah, I know, but did you guys read Act 196? Okay, then you sent, it's 124.467, Section C. By any other income revenue, including appropriations or contributions to other revenues of the members of the public authority and the political subdivision, you are the political subdivision. So you can give us money if you want to.
How is it worded?
Well, I want.
By any other income or revenue, including appropriations or contributions. Of members of the public authority and any political subdivisions, okay?
You guys are a political subdivision. So it's up to you whether you want to give us the authority to talk to the attorney or give us money.
Well.
Cause that's what I gave you last time with Act 196, that's why. I talked to the NTA, the NTA said for the attorney to get your board and our board together to figure out what we can do.
Okay, so from, from a layman's perspective, from a resident's perspective, not a township trustee, right? We just had a big water project go down Colony Drive.
Hmm.
Right? That water did not benefit me, did not benefit the people on this side of town, it benefited Colony Drive.
Right.
They were special assessed to pay for that water because it benefited them, not the whole community, right?
Well, you don't think that Clay Township is one? My tax dollars benefit everybody in this community.
But you're asking for appropriations for something very specific here, right?
Yes, I am.
And what are you looking for exactly? You haven't really stated or made a request.
I want a ruling on 4807. I want to know if it pertains to HIDA in Act 196.
Okay.
Because the bill was written, the bill was written specifically for one ferry in the whole country, in the whole state.
Well, I don't think we can answer that question, I think she, he wants an attorney to answer it.
That's what I want.
Right, you want, you want the money just to ask the attorney.
That's all I'm asking, I don't even, you don't even have to give us any money, we'll get that. I just want to talk to the legal authority, cause I want to go back to Lansing.
What's, what's, you think our board is getting in the way of you talking to an attorney?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. The township attorney, I want to talk to the township attorney.
Our attorney?
Yeah.
At our township expense, which.
At our expense?
Yeah.
Well, why didn't you say that?
Well, that's.
You're making inferences.
Well, it's in a roundabout way.
Okay, well, I need direct, I, I need to know where you're coming from.
I need money to talk to your attorney.
Okay, well, that's what you should ask for.
I can get a quote. Well, then.
How much do they want, you know?
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm saying.
Any idea what our attorney wants?
No, I have no idea, cause I tried to talk to her and I was told, she won't talk to me because it has to be board only.
Right. Okay.
So the board has to give you permission.
The board has to agree to let me talk to the attorney, it could be an hour, it could be two hours, it could be three hours, I don't know.
I see.
Because I already talked to the attorney back in 2000, I mean, no, 2013, February 19th. And did you guys see that from this?
What is it? No.
This is, this is what you had the attorney look at that time.
This is 2013?
Yeah, right.
That, when, oh, this is long.
Different attorney.
Is this when the bill, right before the bill was enacted, the 4807?
No, yeah, this is before 4807 is enacted. And it's, you know.
What is that saying, basically in a nutshell?
Well, it's saying that you can't get rid of HIDA. And it also says that we could have taken control over the MPSC of the rates and ferry rates of HIDA, I mean of, uh, ferry.
Okay.
And this is.
This is a, this is a, an association or that, that is set stagnant.
No, this is not an association.
Authority.
This is an authority.
Okay, so let me rephrase that, this is an authority, the Harsons Island Transportation Authority that is set stagnant for 20 plus years.
Well, yeah, because I have a letter here stating that already wanted everybody's resignation.
When was that?
That was 2014.
Why would you ask for the resignation?
Cause I couldn't get anyone to, to, uh, appoint on it.
Well, there was four members on that.
If they're already appointed.
Whatever.
They were already on the board and you were asked them to resign, I don't understand.
Well, I'm trying to, to not be in the conversation right now, because I was asked not to be.
Well, you see where I'm going with this.
So.
I want to talk to the attorney.
Can we give them the opportunity to have a consultation with our attorney for a limited amount of time, just to get some general questions answered? And kind of at least put them in a direction, I think you guys are just looking for a direction, am I correct?
Exactly, we need to know which way to go and where to go forward.
I mean, however, I do know Christine unfortunately is on vacation this week, so unfortunately, but, I mean, when she comes back, I mean, can we? Can I make a motion for our board to allow the HIDA to at least have a consultation with our attorney for?
Maximum four to five hours, something like that, maximum.
Well, the best thing would be for them to get everything together and send it over and email with all their questions.
Right.
Once she has answered, you that, that.
Maybe she could give us some kind of a quote or a budget?
Quote, that's what I said.
And then, and then we could look at that? I could support that.
That's good.
Want to do that?
I'll take that.
You want, you want to get that information together?
I'll do that.
We'll give you access, um, would you feel, is it more comfortable if we send the information to her or would you like to send the information?
I would like to speak to her.
Okay, well.
I mean, I can, I can send you whatever I'm gonna ask her, but I'd like to.
CC the board on any communications.
I will CC the board on any communications.
So we could all be.
Because technically you are still part of us, whether you like it or not.
I would like to believe that, I don't think that there's a.
Be on the same team.
Us and theirs, that, that's not my mentality, I know that's not.
We're supposed to be all on the same team here, but.
Yep, okay, so I, now I, I got an idea where you want to go, so will you put something together?
Yes.
List of questions?
Yes.
For our attorney?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll, you'll send it to the board?
I will send it to the board and the attorney.
And the attorney?
Yeah, because then I'm gonna go.
And then very specifically in your opening statement, you, you're requesting a budget.
Yes.
From her, or at least a, a dollar or a do not exceed amount, or whatever you want to phrase it, right?
Yeah.
Perfect.
A cost for her.
That'll be a good step for you.
Yeah.
And you just need the board to say it's okay, cause she wouldn't communicate with them before.
She works for the board, yes, and they want us to fund that initial consultation, is that correct? Okay.
Cause Artie's right, there is, there is a line item for 50,000 for us to start, and there's a lot more money.
But we may be able to get something going before then.
Well, yeah, but this is what I'm saying, HIDA is a benefit organization to the island and so far we haven't benefited nothing.
Okay.
We've been spinning our wheels everywhere because there's a lot of federal money out there.
Yeah, I got you. I got you, we, we want what the majority of the islanders want, okay? So I haven't seen your, your survey, you know, I don't know the validity of it, but I'm gonna take. At face value and, and say we want what the majority of the islanders.
Okay, sounds good, I'll take that.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, anything else, guys?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, moving along, uh, we have two line items to donate, uh, money to the Historical. Uh, um. Historical Society, that's the Elgnac Clay Historical Society, uh, $3,000 and the Harsons Island Historical Society of $1,000. I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Historical Society annual contribution of $3,000, line item 101.965.965.01. And the Harsons Island Historical Society for $1,000, line 101.9, excuse me, 101.965.965.05.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have a whole slew of our usual county road work orders. For, uh, seal patching, limestone hauls, chloride mowing, um. Et cetera, et cetera, rubber crack repairs. Um, in a total to 103,432 dollars and 18 cents. And a lot of this, we do get county match to cover it, so, you know, it, it's probably gonna ding our budget about 50 grand.
Um, I believe all that is in consideration of our portion.
Okay.
When I added them up.
Oh, okay, when you added them up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just added up what our responsibility was.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, the limestone, the swath mowing, yeah.
Okay.
And then there was the one project, I believe Phelps Road.
Yep.
Yeah, like this work order is for $19,000 for limestone and I, and that 103,000, I only included our township portion of 49.45. Just so we're clear, that is all township.
Mm-hmm.
Did anybody make a motion yet?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County work orders in the amount of 103,432 dollars and 18 cents.
Motion in support, any discussion? They are consistently under what they, they put, they do a good job.
Yes, I would rather approve more and pay less, for sure.
But it's there in case we have emergency and need it. Not hearing any discussion, roll call vote please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 202105, adopting the 2021 Master Plan Update.
And now we're, we're not required to do a public hearing for this?
No.
Okay.
So what's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the. Planning Commission Resolution, Master Plan Adoption. Resolution 2021-05, Master Plan Adoption.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion to support, as you recall, there was questions on how it was, um. Presented the public, so we just, we felt more comfortable, and I, I thank them for doing that. Um, cause it was debatable if it was contested or not, uh, if, if, uh, we would have a problem, so.
Yeah, so that resolution does reflect, they did, again, have a public hearing on March 24th as well, that is in the resolution.
We've had numerous public hearings, last one was on the 24th, uh, it's been online for people to review, submit their, um, remarks. Uh, we've had, uh, people come up and write letters about it and so on and so forth. So, uh, you know, the, the master plan is a, uh. It's a comprehensive plan, it's also a quasi-document, okay, if you understand what that means. And, uh, it's been long overdue, it's something that'll continue on for the next, uh, was it five years?
Five years, it should be renewed.
So, uh, and after, and at five years when it is renewed, I don't think we're gonna put that much into it. Because it's pretty much all there and think, and I want to thank the planners and the planning commission for putting this together. Under sometimes, uh, unnecessary stress, thank you.
It's a beautiful plan.
So the plan passed the planning commission on an 8-0 vote, right? And there was one absentee? So, given the members that were there, it was unanimously passed, correct?
Correct.
All right, well, that's some good background information.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you to the planning commission for all the hard work.
Yep, thank you.
That's not an easy document to come up with.
Next, we'll have to start on our rec plan.
Yep.
So. It's up. All right, other than that, uh, that's all we have for new business, uh, board member comments. Cindy Valentine?
Um, well, glad to see the weather's warming up, hopefully everybody can get outside and, uh, kind of shake the indoor funk of this COVID. And things will start getting back to normal a little bit better, I know the numbers are, aren't looking that way, but I'm hoping that'll change. I also want to thank the planning commission and Mark for, uh, all your hard work, not only on the, um. Master plan, but the, um, the other ordinances that you've been working on and. Look forward to seeing what we're gonna come up with. That's all I got.
Okay, Chris?
Um, first and foremost, I have a correction. When I was talking to, um, Mr. Bane and Mrs. Baldwin up there, um, one of my last phrases, I said that. We want what the majority of the islanders want, and that is not an accurate statement. I should have said, I want what the majority of the islanders want, okay? I can, I am one of seven voices, and I apologize for being presumptuous there, I was not trying to be presumptuous, I just used the wrong word. So it was me, I.
Do that all the time.
Um, secondly, congratulations to Cindy, what a, what a great accolade.
Thank you.
Um, I'm proud to serve on the board with you, just as equally as proud to serve and have served on the many boards with Sandy Kufel. Thank you for your dedication to this township. And to the people, and mostly to the kids who you seem to give tirelessly to, I appreciate you. Um, lastly, just a quick reminder, we've got Saturday, May the 8th, 8 a.m. for marsh cleanup. Something we go by every day. If you drive a pickup truck up and down M29, you're almost obligated to help out here. Because stuff flies out of the back of your pickup, it just happens inadvertently, so come help out, I'll be there. Good. That's it.
Okay, Joanne?
Um, yes, first of all, congratulations to Cindy.
Thank you, Joanne.
And, um, I have to say this, that I'm, I'm being a little prejudiced because I live on the island. And I have to give a wonderful shout out to the little coffee shop that I attended. Yesterday. And had a wonderful, they just opened up and had a wonderful cup of coffee, they sell scones. We only have two businesses going on the island right now, but now we have a third one, and so it's wonderful.
More now.
I would say to any of you, it's worth the trip to go over and get a cup of coffee there, a donut or whatever. You can't, I get, you can't sit in there now, it's a takeout, but it is worth the trip. So congratulations to the grind, it was a pleasure for me to go in there and have a wonderful cup of coffee. My congratulations.
Uh, what's the name of it, Joanne, the grind?
Grind.
Grind?
The Island Grind.
Island Grind. Maybe when we do a, a meeting over there, we'll do a red ribbon cutting.
Sure.
They're only open like from 7:00 in the morning.
Well, maybe they can make an exception if we, maybe they'll make an exception one day, one Monday.
Evening coffee.
Yeah.
We'll get Michael over there at this campus.
Yeah.
We, we, we can get a little, little Java before the, our meeting to keep us going.
If your supervisor's report is as low as it was today, you might need it.
Sorry. What can I say?
It's a two pager.
I know it. Chrissy, help me out here.
Yes, I've heard of they're doing that, um, birding tour at the DNR Islands.
You know, u- usually it's this time of year and I have not heard, I, I will find out.
Because that was, we went two years ago and then you could be over on the island to get the cup of coffee.
Right.
And then go to the, to the birding.
Right. Yep.
Um, I just wanted to say congratulations to, we had four state placers for wrestling this year, so.
Awesome.
The individual state championships were last weekend and we had four young men in place.
Oh, that's great.
Awesome.
Wonderful, yes.
Didn't we have, uh, Elgnac Muskrat Bowlers at state?
Yes.
Yes.
I sure did.
I'm just not sure of, of what, how they did, but I.
Right, I, I knew we had.
Say one came in second possibly, brooks?
Yeah, I think maybe. We had some, uh, uh, state representation for our muskrat bowlers. Mark?
Well, I want to congratulate Cindy for a job well done during the, uh, election. And, uh, Sandy, congratulations, uh, for being a part of the community, uh, heart goes out to you. Uh, I'm glad to see HIDA over here, uh, appreciate them coming forward and expressing their concerns, which I'm, I support totally. And. We should be careful of the animals out running around right now in the streets, there's, uh, rabbits and specifically turkeys. So turkeys are on the, are on the prowl, uh, I had one coming down, uh, off of 23 from Johnny Leag's area, John almost hit him. And he chased him over into my yard and he flew on top of my roof, so hopefully he'll be there for a while yet.
I'm putting 17th. I'm not putting turkey signs out, Mark.
Okay.
Turkey crossing.
Yeah.
The muskrat.
Yeah, we can't give them the read.
Oh, the, the muskrat's a slaughter, slaughter heaven over there.
Muskrat, we just can't give them the read, so.
No. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Sandy too, and I, I hope and pray all the time that I can fill your shoes because I know what an incredible job, you know, you've done. And Cindy too, congratulations, and not just on the voting, but what you do every week and putting everything together, so, you know, it's great. Remember about cutting those weeds, everybody? It'll look so much better, right? Get the, get that down and, um, yeah, I've heard a lot about people gathering at the Island Grind and having a place to, you know, to go in the morning because there's really nothing open until later on the island, so that's great too. And kudos to Kathy, Chair of the Planning Commission, Mark, everybody who put that master plan together. I hope the community can print that out, there's just so much information about the past and the future. It's a beautiful document, so thank you for, for doing that. Don't forget to sign up for the scramble, it's pretty exciting, I wish I golfed, but I'll go and support. That's right, that's right, I'll do that. And kudos to you, Artie, for, you know, stepping down on, on all this because that's probably, you know, definitely a stand-up thing to do, so I'm sure the people appreciate that and have a great couple of weeks.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, thanks again for the Planning Commission, for the master plan, it's, uh, uh, good to get approved and, and press on. Like I mentioned, we're going to have to start working, I'll get some quotes on, on doing the rec plan because that's up this year, and if we don't have it to date, we can't get grants for it, uh, for our parks. Congrats, Cindy, and your staff, Janet, well deserved. You know, it's a lot of work and, uh, and they, I, I, I see them every, all the time, they, they take painstaking measures to make sure every vote, every person has one vote and every vote's counted once. I even tested it a few times. So, but it, it's a good thing, and Sandy, kudos, good seeing you. Miss you. So, but, uh, and she's, she's definitely always like steps up for our community in many, many ways. And, um, I'm glad to see that the, our Planning Commission, also we got the Cannabis Ordinance up at the county and soon as we get that back from the county, we'll, we're going to get that on, on our agenda ASAP. Help out our, that's, that's going to be a huge help to our community, we.
So just to be clear, Artie, that, that cannabis ordinance for the people is, it's not we're inviting it.
No.
That ordinance is meant to restrict.
Restrict, further restrict.
Further restrict, I mean, they're already allowed to do so much according to the law, right?
Everyone's saying, what are you doing, bringing in all, you know?
It's already here.
We're restricting it further. By state law, you can do medical marijuana, uh, and it's very loosely defined, we're tightening it up and making it more restrictive and protecting people's property rights, in other words, for odor or light and, and other things. Hours of operation, traffic, I mean.
And more to come on that, but just, I just wanted people to realize we're not.
No, you're right, I saw, I, I, I heard that, what are you doing, open it up, no, 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 no. We're restricting it, so thank you for that. Other than that, I hope everyone had a happy Easter and, and happy spring.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Thanks for coming, everybody, good meeting.